I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle.
I pray. Father, as we gather today in June County businesses, be with us. Help us to make wise decisions. Keep in mind that we represent all the taxpayers of any county. Also, Lord, we desperately need some moisture in Western Kansas. In Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning, all. This is Wayne Brice, I'm the chairman of the county commission. Just a few opening comments this morning. We are still in the middle of our pandemic activity. There is several sides to this rascal, and we as commissioners have the vertical responsibility, as well as our city commissioners, to look at both sides, all sides in this issue, and try to make the best judgment we can for Fiddy County. A lot of people disagree. One of our patrons kind of summed it up this way. We were all in the same storm, but not necessarily in the same boat. So, we're doing our best, and just rest assured, none of us in both commissions are in this for fame and fortune. It's not why we're commissioners. We all truly love this county. Some of us were born and raised here and never left it, and some of us has made it their home. It is our home, and we truly doing the best we can for our citizens, and please respect our decisions. And it's not an easy thing. There's no right or wrong. All right, let's proceed, ladies and gentlemen. Any additions to the overall agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we may maybe want to include this in our health department updates and so on, or perhaps a separate agenda item, but we need to discuss our reopening plan upon the ability to reopen the county businesses. So if you want to put that off as an agenda item, so on, so forth.
Say it again.
All right, gentlemen, first up, all those in favor of that motion, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Let's put it down after we have our report from our medical director and health department administrator. Any approval of the consent agenda that's in front of you, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon, and I would move that we approve those items on consent agenda. Clifford, seconds.
All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Any old business to come to force? Let's address public comment. Since most of you are on Facebook, helping to meet us, if you have questions or comments, please send them in. I believe there's a pathway. Hopefully, you know where it is. And we'll get to those later on in the meeting. Give you guys a chance to bring something else. Anybody who's in the staff group. So, any comment from the staff that's not on me, gentlemen? Hearing none. Business items. Who do we have on the line for community development?
My English very good, you know, it's a trial.
Good morning, ladies. And you want to start us off on the partial flat, the first one on the list.
As you're dealing with the first case I have is FC 2020 PA dash 21, the E and N subdivision. Is that 7555 Rochelle Road and 4241 Six Mile Road? These are already two acres. Basically, what they did is they locked on the father and found the building to the side, so that we may not lock on that section of the building during his parents' or anything to it very far.
I see that there is minimal discussion from the planning permission.
Correct.
Any fellow, do you guys have any questions on this?
What else?
The Roth family, I don't think. Just looks pretty cut and dry. If that guy moved, we'd go ahead and accept this. Read, uh, reply?
Reply.
End this line, I would second.
Further discussion? All those approve of the approval of the motion to reply, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. The third one, please.
The specific plan I have for you is FC 2020 PA dash 22. It's a little clearer addition. Is that 4130 Town Road? And it contains eighty-four point eight nine six acres. There's a house and several buildings, some properties. It's a farmer that owns all the grounds around him. However, I don't know if he's going to be retired at some point, but he wanted to add more land to his personal property. He's over the forty acres. Can't possibly result in any things. He wanted to add a little bit more land to his personal property.
Again, I don't see a lot of discussion from the planning permission. I'm looking at the map. It's like a surveyor's dream. Throwing that one out. Chairman, maybe you're speaking, and I'll offer motion to approve that portion of that.
Clifford, I'll second.
Any further discussion on the third flat addition? All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
And the last one I have is FC 2015 dash forty-seven, the Peter Village, the actual plan. This is an old case that was done by John Stewell in fifteen that they dropped before the planning commission. And they decided to cancel it. However, they're deciding to proceed with it. They didn't need to take it back to the planning commission, since there's no age limit on the plan, on the primary plan. Basically, what they're doing is they're adding some land to the existing, so it was two point two three acres. They're adding two point seven seven in order to make that the full five acre acreage. And it is, they agreed only back in twenty fifteen to do real residential, so it's great on you to go back and rebuild and renovate.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon, and I would move that the FC 2015 dash forty-seven partial plan be approved.
This is fair, and I'll say the motion. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, ladies.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready to take in the topic of the month. We need some updates. We have several in the audience, plus Dr. Burns on the line. Speed flip up here, ready to ball up here, is that right?
Sure, I can jump in there.
All right, put a cord, please, so you can use the mic. Up in here.
Good morning, thank you. I'll keep this kind of brief. From an emergency management perspective, we're still in partial activation. We're communicating daily with KDEM, EOC. They're in full activation, of course. We have a couple of conference calls each day with that as well. We get updates through our email system, and I try to disseminate those out to our vested parties to keep everybody abreast of what's going on. We started doing a little bit, expanding our scope a little bit, a deeper reach to our community as far as disseminating information. We've incorporated the community college, as well as our school board leadership, keeping them on board of what's going on. We provide them with our Fiddy County EOC matrix each day, as well as our KD and OM EOC situational report. As we progress further, we think that's some critical information that we can share and just be a good partner with them. We're also coordinating some logistics for the non-contrigent housing. Those are under command of KD Family and Children, with support of the National Guard. We've written some protocol for them. And of course, we're working through Dr. Burns to make sure that we're meeting those objectives and intervening when necessary to support them. For some discussions with our EMS director, Skyler Swart. He's indicated that their, and I'm sure Colleen will talk about this, their call volume is trending upwards, due in part for the CB-19, so we are seeing some activity along those lines. Our PPE challenges continue. Again, we're getting good coordination from the state, and our private communities are still reaching out to us, and we're very appreciative of that. And we disseminate that, those supplies when we can. We're in daily communications with our garden CDP leadership, our sheriff's department leadership, and our health department, supporting those initiatives out of the drive-through, emphasizing safety and just coordinating logistics when we can. We continue to communicate with the United Way to assess our capabilities to build a support structure around those that's positive, looking at our food banks, looking at our contingencies along those lines. Couple of upcoming activities we're going to look at. I'm going to reach out to some of our business partners and kind of reassess their surge capacity as our numbers increase, and try to build some base business contingencies around that to support those endeavors. Still working on some sheltering contingencies, assessing availability, looking, just seeing what we can do to support that. We are into the storm season, so we're sensitive to that, and make sure that they're functioning and ready to activate if needed. And again, we're always looking at some cost-cutting measures as we proceed further into this journey. So, that's kind of where we stand from an emergency management perspective.
Guys, questions, Chris?
Sure. Just a little word here, Steve. Did you have an idea of a census in the sleep-in and has it been over code to the college?
It's, no, sir, it's very minimal at this juncture. It's like maybe one, one maybe two. We had a potential opportunity this weekend that didn't pan out. The individual changed his mind. So, you know, we're still at the concipient phase of that. We anticipate that accelerating at any day. But at this juncture, it's still basically just on standby.
Sounds like you're ready.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Jones. To me, the question I have is, as you're dealing with the businesses, are you also incorporating the concept of what Chamber and the other folks have designed here in the document, giving guidance to the reopening?
Yeah, we're, right now, we're more supporting them from a PPE perspective and reaching out, offering any support we can give them. We haven't, you know, gone to that degree yet. We will. That's something we're trying to formulate and put together, how we can assist them to open up, you know, anything we can do from the EOC perspective to engage them and, you know.
Do you want to add something, Dave?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have one observation or comment. I had a business owner approach me that, with thermometers, that we need, seem to be in very short supply on back order. Is there any solution to that? Do you guys have any access for business owners later on, seeing when we do open up the non-sensibles, that can get their hands on these small thermometers?
We can, we're going to actively pursue that. We just got a matrix from KDEM this weekend, and they've got some stuff in inventory, and they've got, I think, three or over three thousand thermometers. So, we're going to reach out and try to get some of those. Will you see where that goes? Some of that's from the struggle in the past. Of course, we encourage businesses, if they can reach out to our private sector to do so, then we can assist. We certainly will.
I think his comment was, they're all on back order, but they were looking for some, anyway. That'll be an issue that's going to be front-end of the role as well.
Oh, yes, sir. We're going to work it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Oh, I have a question for you. On the sheriff, how's the sheriff's jail population? Are his numbers staying steady? Or does he have, you have any input with it?
The communication we've had, they've got their headcount down to somewhere around fifty or sixty percent. I believe they're being, and I'm not trying to speak for the sheriff, they're being more sensitive to their incarceration numbers, things of that nature. They don't have to arrest somebody, I don't think they are. So, they are being sensitive to that. Of course, they're doing temperature checks and everything, and everybody enters the building in the mornings. They're wearing PPE on a daily basis, and, you know, they're being very proactive along these lines.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
This is Dr. Burns. I can weigh in a little bit, because I made recommendations about what to do at the jails. That's under my purview for medical directorship. And we have, we do have isolation and monitoring protocols in place. I will say, on the point of testing temperatures, we've found over the course of this disease, that it's a less sensitive marker than we thought at the beginning as far as screening. So, the utility of that going forward is questionable.
Good to know that, thank you. Would you like to continue on with your report, Dr. Burns, since you're started? Colleen is working her way up here as well.
I'd like to weigh in on that particular point with some clarity. I'd like for Colleen to present the data that we have assembled.
Okay, she's secure now.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Good morning. So, you guys kind of asked for some data from the last meeting that we had, so we have some things kind of put together. So, as of today, we have five hundred and fifty total positives. We have a hundred and sixty-nine of those are pending. Eight hospitalizations currently, and we have three additional that are pending results to be determined COVID-19-related. So, we did see an increase there. In the first forty-five days of testing, we performed five hundred and eighteen tests that resulted in two hundred and thirty-nine positives. This also includes one death. That is approximately a forty-six percent positive rate. Over the four days following, we performed five hundred and eighteen tests that resulted in three hundred positives and included two deaths. That is approximately a fifty-eight percent positive rate. In the last four days, we've had a hundred and twenty-five percent greater positives than we did the first forty-five days, and it took less than ten percent of the time to reach that. This leaves no doubt that our residents and visitors have a much greater chance to contract COVID-19 virus. That is why Dr. Burns and I have pushed forward with doing the additional one week of the stay-at-home order. And I'll also have Dr. Burns explain why there is some confusion and potential issues with tracking the recovery rates. Dr. Burns, did you hear that? Oh, okay.
I did. So, this came up at the last meeting, and I will tell you that the, the CCC's actual test-based strategy for determining recovery requires a negative nucleic acid test, which again, tests for active virus, done after testing positive, and then another at a twenty-four hour interval, again, a second negative. Now, with the test-based strategy, obviously, with our very limited supply of testing, this is not being utilized on any sort of widespread basis. Actually, the only instance that I have come across this is when people are being determined whether or not they can be convalescent seral donors. So, in lieu of that, the KHGE has presented us with a practical guide that goes along with our guidelines for releasing folks from isolation, which is, folks need to be asymptomatic for seventy-two hours, or at least a minimum of seven days after the date of their positive test to be considered eligible to release from isolation. Now, we know with the natural course of disease, that people can get sick later than that, and present to the hospital even in more extremit, later than that. And so, I think there is some variability there. As far as could we make an indirect calculation? Yes, we could go back to data of our positive tests, and then extrapolate that if those folks haven't died, then they are in some state of recovery. I will say, there are some that are lost to follow-up, whether they're transferred out or leave the county. But overall, the biggest issue with trying to track this in any kind of reliable fashion is that we just don't have the capacity to continue to do the kind of follow-up. It isn't necessary to determine really where people are in their disease course or their recovery. So, with all of that being said, I think it's difficult for us to report at least a percentage of recovered rate. I don't discount folks who have attempted to do that, but as far as my level of being comfortable with the data, if we could assemble and push that out, I'm not. And so, I think that, you know, you can make assumptions based on the positive testing, but then also when we're having such a big increase of cases, especially in the recent time period, that, that number of people who are in that time window is so much larger, that it's really hard to do a look back. We can, as we get farther into this, however, we can keep trying to make some estimates, but at this time, I find that just, there's too many variables to really give you a reliable number. Further, with regard to test testing, we have changed the criteria for testing. We have tried to widen it every time KHGE has broadened their criteria. The criteria has broadened as we've been able to understand, and the function of more testing becoming available. Ideally, ideally, we would be able to test asymptomatic people. Ideally, we would be able to widely test asymptomatic people, especially in settings where there's not been ability to do appropriate social distancing, including the jail, including long-term care facilities, and including the meatpacking plant. So, that's not available to us right now. Instead, we are trying to test the widest method we can under the criteria set forth to us by KHGE. I'm happy to try and address questions, or I can, with any comments as things become relevant that I think I can ask you.
Commissioner? Dr. Burns, what are exactly the criteria for testing?
Absolutely. So, right now, we are basing that on whether or not there is contact with a positive case, a household contact, or if people are displaying two symptoms that have broadened more. Like I said, fever, cough, respiratory distress, were the initial symptoms. That is now being found to be not as sensitive, and the symptoms have broadened to cough, headaches, sore throat, muscle ache, new loss of taste or smell. As I mentioned earlier with the fever, while fever is a prominent symptom, it can come on at varying time points during the course of the illness. Screening with temperatures, which we thought was going to be effective, has proven not to be such. Not that people don't suffer fever, but it's just a big screening mechanism, not as reliable. And the shortness of breath, turns out, doesn't really occur until very, very late into the illness, when people are in more extremit. And he did widen that criteria, or excuse me, widen that criteria is really the more appropriate way to describe it, about at the same time that we really started ramping up our testing capability here in the county.
Colleen, are you taking just drive-ups at the testing station at the fairgrounds, or they have to make previous calls to get in?
So, we still do the same screening process, call the hotline. We have to screen them and then schedule them for the appointment to then come through the drive-through. This helps us to strategically plan how much volume of traffic so that we can move the traffic through quickly. Other sites have done just open hours, and they've had a lot of issues with having to send people away to come back later because of a long wait. And so, we're really trying to make this as convenient as possible for people with times. It's, of course, flexible. We've had people that haven't showed up at their time, and we allow them through later that day.
Commissioner?
I do, I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. Lon, I'm trying to figure out if these fit in this report or if they fit in some of our further future discussions. I'll ask a couple of these here. Colleen, a couple of different times you've shared with us, including last Wednesday, that you're using the life of people, because, and partly because, or maybe even mainly because, it's cost-effective. However, I was told over the weekend that through President Trump's orders, through conversations with insurance carriers like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, et cetera, that the insurance carriers are paying the cost of those tests with private labs. So, would that help us accelerate the testing results, knowing that those costs are going to be reimbursed by the people who have health insurance?
So, yes, but I need other facilities potentially here in town to begin testing as well. So, there's only so much traffic that we can handle at our current site. We are continually looking at ways that we can increase that capacity. But as I will remind you, that we have more than tripled in two weeks, our capacity. And so, yes, that helps, but we also And so, yes, that helps, but we also need potentially other clinics to help with that testing and screening. We don't have a particular limit on KTHG because they've actually worked with us to triple that capacity and provide us more testing supplies because of that.
The point of my question, though, was it sounded like from the previous two times that we were doing in FICA, not just for that reason that you stated here at the last, but also for a cost reason. And it was shared with me this weekend that the cost reason may not be a valid reason, that the cost is being, without deductible, without co-insurance, is being reimbursed by the insurance companies for those tests.
But would you agree that not all of our citizens have insurance?
Well, no, I'm not saying it. And that's why I said, that's why I said a minute ago, those with insurance.
That's why we are kind of passing this as free for whoever comes through and streams with us, which we feel is the best move for our community. If people would like to pursue that private lab and bill insurance, then sure, that's fine. For time, time is, of course, the essence for us, and so billing on the backend could be time-consuming, and then I'm going to have to bring other staff to do that as well. And so really, we're trying to do what's best over site for community of providing that for free through KTHG's lab.
And Dr. Burns, I'd like to add to that as well. Cost has been a consideration for us, but certainly not the driving consideration. It has been access, how to access tests the most broadly and the most reliable access that we've been able to obtain is through KTHG as far as a flow of tests and an available lab to run those tests and a reliable reporting results back mechanism. Now, through this, the capacity for private labs has changed. We've had lots of promises. I can tell you early on, when Abbott and Latkor and Quest said that they were coming online, we tried to source supplies from them, and we're not able to do so in a quantity in the same way that we work from the state lab. That situation has changed. Now, I agree with Colleen, if people want to pursue testing through their provider, their physician, that's fine. I would like somehow for the health department to be notified of those test results in a timely manner. I know that the hospital uses a separate, a private lab. That's fine, but we just need to get those results back in a timely manner for contact investigation and some of the support services we're doing. But as far as being able to plan what our testing capacity is and obtain a reliable flow of resources, and as the more tests that we require that, based on our trajectory and our trends, K Health, is able to provide to us, then that's the way that we pursue as a public entity.
Second question, and I do have three that I think fit this category on our agenda, Mr. Chairman. The second question, this was brought to me this weekend. The concern was raised that our law enforcement people, if they are ill, are sent home. And this one particular illustration was with regard to a police officer, Garden City Police Officer. Don't know whether the same is happening with the Sheriff's Department. But sent home but was not tested. Is that the practice? Is there sent, the law enforcement people are sent home if there's some sign of illness, but then they're not tested?
Dr. Burns, I can speak to this one. So actually, last week, we did meet with fire EMS, police, and sheriff to actually discuss this and talk about what the testing capacity would look like for law enforcement and first responders. The big thing is that upon exposure to a potential positive, they will not become symptomatic and immediately test positive. And that's what they were understanding, is that basically I come in contact with someone, I'm going to be positive, so I should be tested immediately. What we are instructing is, because there is a lengthy incubation period with this particular virus, we need to ensure that there are some sort of symptoms that are occurring upon testing to ensure that we are accurately testing those individuals. Because if we test too soon, we're potentially giving them a false sense of security, sending them back to their unit, and then they're potentially infecting the others upon that time. So we set up basically a protocol of best practice of waiting at least three to five days for symptoms to appear, because that's when we're most often seeing symptoms before we test. It's kind of in the best interest of everyone involved here because we don't want them going back to their unit and infecting their unit.
And I appreciate and respect that answer. The one illustration that was given to me, and I'm getting this secondhand, as in the spirit of public closure, was a police officer who was at home and isolated for six days but was never tested. And that was the illustration that was given to me this weekend. So I don't know this specific case, but I appreciate the response you just delivered to us.
And I'll say, so since all of this has kind of arisen, we did talk to law enforcement to please communicate with me as much as possible. I'm always here and willing to help them. Of course, we want to keep our first responders safe. But we don't want to also, like I said, get that false sense of security. But we're willing to help them in any way possible.
Thank you. And then my third question, this third question, Mr. Chairman, is earlier this morning I was asked, so the county commission did this last Wednesday, the medical director did this on Friday. Where do we stand? And people don't know. People, there's a misunderstanding. So the clarification of what the order that was given Friday means versus the action that we took on Wednesday?
I will take that question, Commissioner.
And that's fine.
Statute gives our county health administrator, executive authority over even the governor to extend something of medical nature like this. She can overrule everybody, county commission and governor, to extend something like this.
The medical director.
The medical director.
So it's actually the local health officer, which is me in association with our medical director, because you do have to have a MD level supporting that.
And then further clarification, since we're in open session and people are watching, the order then says?
We're essentially extending the stay-at-home order that we've had in place since March or April.
A long time ago.
Several weeks, yes. So the exact same qualifications there, so we extended it for another week. A lot of that was, yes, done on Friday in the event of the increased EMS calls, the two deaths, and then the stats of how many tests that we have had come up positive. We definitely have a huge concern, and we're barely on the cusp of this expected increase.
And then I have one clarification. A couple of times now, it's been referenced that we had two additional deaths, which I know that's been on your chart and so forth. It's my understanding, and clarify, or excuse me, correct me if I'm incorrect. It's my understanding that two of those three deaths have had underlying health issues. One did not. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to weigh in on this, however. This is Dr. Burns. So while we have been told all along, and it is certainly true that it is consistent with the ongoing guidelines and recommendations that people with underlying health conditions, as would be obviously logically expected, people are at higher risk. I will say that people without underlying conditions are also at risk. What we are learning about this disease is that it is unpredictable. It is not only a respiratory disease, it also affects blood vessels, maybe causing an endothelitis. That's why we're seeing uptick in stroke, cardiac, or gatchel MI's, and pulmonary emboli. And so if you look at the medical literature surrounding this, there is not someone who is going to be free of risk for this. Even children are affected, and there have been deaths of children. So while I think certainly those people who have underlying conditions, certainly those who are older, certainly those who are immunocompromised are at a higher risk, that certainly does not mean there's not risk for the rest of us. And I'm lucky to count myself in that pool of people who doesn't have an underlying condition. But I think that the idea of what an underlying medical condition affects a very wide aspect of our population. Whether that's high blood pressure, whether that's diabetes, whether that's underlying immune deficiency or cancer, or damaged lungs from smoking, or asthma.
Robert.
Yes, Dr. Clifford, just to address this, both our health experts. I appreciate you being conservative about the emergency order, but as I see the limited data, we still aren't in that 14, COVID, go through the 14-day gate of decreasing cases anytime soon, meaning that that order would have to be revisited, and maybe even for our chairman as well. You know, you all have the timely data. Should you be making those calls, or should we commissioners be at this table, again, even this week, to make that decision? So I'm kind of opening up that discussion because I see need to extend beyond 10.
So I think that's potentially a discussion for what we were talking about for, after the reopening plan. So did we want to go there yet, or did we want to continue?
If you're...
I mean, the federal delivery and from KTHG is, yes, the recommendation is two weeks of a decline in positive rate as well as a decline in hospitalizations and deaths. We have not obviously seen that yet.
Correct. And we should, you should go, this is Robert. You should go through the process of convening then as the board of health and really begin that process of fleshing this thing out a little bit more. As you've heard, your health experts here have indicated statistically that you are continually seeing those increases at an increasing rate, not at a decreasing rate. And as you pointed out, the standard is to see a consistent decreasing rate. And at this point in time, they've not indicated, based upon their stats, that we hit that point. Question? Robert, okay, go ahead. There's several sides to this as well. I recall from my grandfather's conversations back in the 30s when the depression hit, there was tremendous amount of suicides. And if any of the hotlines had an increase in questions, people stressed to that point. Is anybody maybe online, or your staff can answer that? I mean, there's probably a lot of stress out there.
So far, we have not had any reports or questions about mental health on a hotline. And so it's been more so screening and availability of testing. So that hasn't been something that has been brought to my attention at this time. I know Dr. Burns definitely can speak to the mental health issues that are going on as she is in the loop with a lot of that.
So while I haven't spoken with our local campus health or crisis hotline regarding our specific statistics, I can say that in keeping up with the medical literature, indeed, there was a published piece earlier this month in the New England Journal of Medicine speaking to the concerns about depression, anxiety, and especially considering how this impacts children as well, which is probably underdiagnosed. So what I think we need to focus on is we have underlying deficits in our mental health, care, infrastructure, as is. Now you put on a pandemic virus that people aren't scared of. You can layer in the economic concerns, but the underlying problem is the virus. The underlying problem that's causing everyone anxiety is the virus. I would argue that until we are able to provide folks with some sort of security around how this virus is going to affect them, whether that means their health status or whether or not it affects their ability to go to work. And I think in addition to business owners, we need to talk about the workers who are going to be going to work in those businesses and their fears. And business owners' fears about how this affects, you know, their workers' health, their customers' health, as well as the financial health. You know, I think it's more than just, well, all of these problems will be alleviated if we just let people go back to work. I don't think that's actually the case. I will absolutely agree that there is an incredible amount of stress and anxiety and depression surrounding and affecting all of us with this virus. Absolutely. How we deal with that going forward, I think is absolutely a community-wide endeavor as well. And we could use a lot more volunteers, a lot more resources. But even that connection that I tried to emphasize from the beginning, and I think that all of us are really searching for, even if you can't physically connect with people, emotionally, reaching out, telephonically, through video, whatever we can do to maintain our community fabric and our community support, that's going to help alleviate some of that anxiety and that isolation that's leading to these increased, if you will, or at least the expected increases in mental health issues going forward, examples.
Mr. Chairman, no question. Lisa Southern is available to call into the meeting right now if you'd like to hear her.
I would like to hear her perspective if she could.
And, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask if you had any contact with our campus.
We're testing, and she asked if I'll call you in.
Because I think we need to have that.
Can I bring you in live to the county commission meeting? Please.
The other, I would just simply add, the other issue I saw in the news the other night, it's not specific to Fannie County, is child abuse is on the up.
Commissioner's speaker, she's speaking right now. Lisa, you'll be addressed by Point 3, the chairman of the commission.
Good morning, Lisa.
Hello.
Thank you for joining our meeting. Could you give your perspective on how things are going on the film side of this?
We are, so we have remained providing services at what I call full force. We switched, probably about, well, we started our pilot project on April 19, and then that following week, I'm sorry, May 19, March 19, gosh, March 19. And then that following week, we moved almost all services to Hella Hill and had our buildings locked except for limited access at the end of March. So right outside.
I think the commission's interested in, are there increased calls regarding suicide? Or how is this affecting the overall, depression, et cetera?
We, so we have not had an increase in crisis calls just from the community at large, and that's pretty much statewide. A lot of our crisis services come when people present to the emergency room. And the concern is that, you know, people don't want to leave their home or go to the emergency room. So we are concerned about, you know, getting access to all the people that might need us. Now, our current clientele, they know how to access us. And so we do have somewhat of an increase in crisis services with children. You know, their life has been very disrupted. Not having school in a traditional fashion, not being disciplined enough to stay up to what they need to do with the online schooling, and then that's causing conflict in the home. So that's not good. The lack of socialization with their friends. So our children's crisis house has actually become quite busy with children who are not dealing well with this. I just learned this morning that there was a teenage suicide in Dodge City in the early morning hours. Not something, not someone that we've ever had services with.
Lisa, I want to see if the commissioner has specific questions.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Commissioner. Not a specific question, Mrs. Long. But I do appreciate what Lisa is saying. I wonder, is there any addition? I wonder, is there any additional way to track and know? I've also heard, as I stated just before you came on the line, that child abuse is on the uptick. I saw that on News Report the other day. Not specific in Fannie County, but just in general because there's so much of that at home. And you kind of alluded to that with what you've said about children just now. But depression and potential suicide and so forth and so on. Is, do you have monitoring systems to even help us with documentation of the other? Well, I mean, interject. I said in our last meeting, it's not lives versus economy, it's lives versus lives. And so lives affected by the virus, lives affected by the virus in your realm, Lisa. Could you hear that, Lisa?
Yes, I hope. We, you know, I, I'm not hearing that we're necessarily finding out a lot about the domestic violence or child abuse calls that are being made unless for some reason there's concern of, you know, someone maybe being suicidal because of that, and then they're being sent over to us. So I don't think that's something that we've got going on tracking wise just because we don't always know what's happening.
Okay.
Okay.
Lisa, thank you for coming on spontaneously. Talk to you later.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you very much.
It's good luck.
As I might have mentioned in the opening comments to the public, there's several, several sides to this. And that was, we need to look at all sides. And that was the point of that discussion. Any further comments before we move on to how to open our businesses?
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Johnson. I have first a comment, a general comment, and then a question for our health experts. As a commissioner, my comment is until a week and a half ago, all I heard from the official side of things was, please let us open our businesses. And we took some action, our discussion was held. And all of a sudden, we began to hear the other side, the concerned side about opening. So at some point, we're going to open. And I'd like to see us believe in our plans so that we're in agreement between the business realm that wants to open and the health realm that wants to protect our health. I mean, that's my general comment now. I have a bit of praise for Dr. Burns. On April the 30th, you sent out a document with some statistics on Thursday. And I highly appreciate that. That begins to answer a lot of questions regarding information we as commissioners did not really have. So from that point, I thank you. To me, the one thing that might be a little more, lend a bit more clarity to the rising or the falling rates would be, you, Colleen, if we, you opened your drive-through facility on April 20. And as I recall, being down there, you had enough tests for about 50 tests at that. And I would be interested, out of those 50 tested on April the 20th, how many were positive? Then again, on April the 21st, you had about, I think at the time, about 50 tests. How many of those were positive? Day after day, with those statistics, and I'm sure you had them, that way either you or I could calculate the percent of the people tested that tested positive. That would really show the trend.
So those were the figures that I was getting at the beginning of this discussion? So up until last week, overall, we saw about a 46% positive rate. Now, in that last week, we saw closer to that 58% positive rate. The way that the data is coming in is that when we get a batch of positives, sometimes that could be the 20th, that could be the 21st, and stuff on the 22nd.
That's my opinion.
So they're sprinkled. That's why we're then looking at the full week's numbers of total population of tested and then taking the positives of that rate. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And the full week is helpful, but the day-by-day, to me, would be even more helpful and lend more clarity. We were for a while as commissioners receiving an email kind of daily from our county administrator saying that somebody tested positive today. Well, that was helpful information. We didn't know how many tested. We knew how many were positive. I'm just saying there's a circle of facts out there that we need to put together so we have a little more clarity in our decision-making.
Well, this is Dr. Burns. And, you know, we have tried to be transparent with our data. I will say that our staff, we are trying to perform multiple functions. And the way that I generated that report was, I got this database and stayed up all night trying to compile that data for you.
That's what I was...
We could use a full-time staff to just manage the numbers and compile reports, and that would be great. I do think, and to be very, very consistent with the federal gating criteria, as well as, you know, for us to make decisions going forward, we should use the positivity rate. We should use the positivity rate, which would be consistent with what the federal gating criteria is, for decision-making. I think looking at whether we do case counts or declining hospitalizations and those type things, for us, the positivity rate is going to be most accurate. The concern I have, if you look at the federal gating criteria, they do list declining hospitalizations or a declining positivity rate as your first level gating criteria to move forward. The problem with that is you have to be able to capture all of your hospitalizations and their dispel, if you will. So if we have people who are being transferred out or seek care at other hospitals, or people, whatever, there's going to be some missing data there. The data that we know and can confirm is the data that we have in our database or our testing site and then to our partners who give us their test results, whether that be in a hospital, which is reporting to us most reliably. So that's why I think for decision-making sake, we do need to determine what statistic we're going to look at. And most of the ones in that case positivity rate.
Well, Dr. Burns, I appreciate the effort. I realize you had real hard to put together the document we received. But as I said, that begins to really open the picture up so we can see more clearly what's taking place. Now, I want to see if I can put you on the spot. Based on what you're seeing now, Colleen and Dr. Burns, in terms of the projection, the upward trend of positives, might we kind of safely begin to assume that come a week down the road that your order will be renewed?
Yes, because we haven't seen a 14-day decline yet.
Okay, because the, my email right now, my phone is vibrating, people asking where are we? I'm going to be able to answer. Thank you. Let's move on. We've covered this side of the equation quite a bit. When we had our meeting Wednesday, we, as commissioners, voted to open it to non-essential. This is what most of the public does not know, that, and that, at that point in time, our Economic Development Company, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Vision, Commissioned Visitors were working very hard on a guide for our businesses to reopen. And it's a very informative, very restrictive suggestion. And I've asked Lana and all to come forward. She's our link to our businesses in this community. They come to Lana way before anybody else do. What do we do? What do we do now? And I've asked Lana to come forward. And this is on her website. And hopefully, I believe it's also on the Chamber website, her recommendations. And she's going to discuss briefly with us and the community what they are suggesting when our non-essentials are allowed to open. Lana, you have it for her.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good morning. I would start by offering that we do have, county economic development corporation does have a statistical analyst onboard on our staff. And he is absolutely available. If the health department needs assistance in compiling those statistics in a way that's meaningful and that can actually indicate to you in a continuous track with when form of that document and that data coming to you, we will absolutely make him available to assist with that. He obviously doesn't need to be aware of who the individuals are if it does not come into it. He's a number one.
He knows the numbers.
And if the health department would provide him with the numbers that they want to track, we will absolutely compile that into information that you're used to seeing and that you can see day-to-day activity, not one report that looks one way and then a week later, a report that looks a different way. So I would just offer that up to you first and foremost. You have that absolutely available to you. So a couple of things I'd want to update you on from ongoing stuff. From the community development block grant loans, I mean, you guys have had one application come before that you've been able to approve, and we appreciate that. We are continuing to see the trend that the businesses who are able to qualify to the low and moderate income piece of that are typically going to be restaurants, retailers, hotels, that type of industry. As you know, most of those are within the corporate limits of the city. The C V G at the state level had put a rule in place that if cities have their own funds, counties didn't have to fund loans within those cities. I will tell you that the city of Garden City will take up loan applications tomorrow that will take their balance to $34,000. So we would certainly like to have your funds available to them. I have reached out to the Department of Commerce, and they are having their legal counsel review that rule that they feel like is a state rule that they made administratively, but they're not entirely sure. So they're looking at that. We may be bringing applications to you for businesses that are inside the corporate city loans, just so you're aware of that. We would hope to be able to do that. I know you guys want to be as helpful as you can to our businesses too this time. So we'll certainly keep you posted on that. The reopening guide, as you mentioned, and I broke our own rule and printed it just so that you guys could see what it looks like. We are really suggesting to businesses not to print it. We're not making it available in printed form because we really want people to understand it will be updated consistently. As we can see, things change. And so we want to make sure that this guide is as current as it can be for them. But we also recognize it is extremely important for our businesses to have a plan in place. I think Dr. Burns said, well, we aren't just talking about employers and business owners and business managers. We're talking about every one of their employees as well as every one of their consumers. And so businesses are really, right now, what they're looking for is, what do I do? What can I be doing today to prepare for my eventual reopening? Whether that's in a week or in two weeks? They just need to be able to plan. I think the sooner we can provide them with information, the better. Certainly, when you are a business who has, you know, 15, 20 employees, it can be challenging. You've got them all geared up, and they think that they're reopening on a certain date, and they're ready for it to do that. And it can be challenging to regroup all of them. Say, hang on, wait, things have changed. So I think the more time we can give folks to prepare, the better that is. I would tell you, we've seen a lot of positivity in our businesses. Those that reach out most directly, those that participated in the webinar that we had last Thursday, very positive. They just, again, they're just looking for clarity and looking for the best practices that they can use going forward. The webinar we did last week, we had over 5,500 views on that webinar. So it's obvious to us that that is something that businesses are looking for. They're looking for information. And so we are doing another webinar this afternoon at 2:00. Again, we've invited the other entities to take part in that. So the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Vision, and Commissioned Visitors Bureau will be on that call again today, that webinar. And we're taking questions as we go. We've got businesses that are sending in questions that we're tracking that we know would be important to all who would be watching that webinar. So we'll certainly include those in that. But again, from our standpoint, it's not about, it's not about when they reopen. It's more about how they reopen. And so from our standpoint, again, we certainly don't want to try to force anybody's hand. I would tell you, we have businesses who won't open even if you told them they for sure could open next Monday. We have businesses who aren't prepared to do that, and we understand that. So the best we can do is to give them the best information available at any given time, which again, changes. You know, the CDC guidelines for businesses reopening are still suggesting different checks. So while that may not be a guaranteed driver of this disease, it's still something that's being recommended. And so we're going to continue to provide businesses with the information they need regardless of when they reopen. But I think, again, from the business standpoint, what they would express is just the more time they can have to deal with changes, the better off it is. Again, they're providing great grace and being very understanding of the fact that this is a changing beast. But anything you can do to help alleviate some of the confusion would be helpful.
I might point, just pointing to those in the audience who are not aware, most, if not all, of the recommendations are medically related on how to protect employees as well as consumers. You had a lot of input, I believe. Could you name off a few that? K E G, for example, who will help you with the medical advice on this?
Yeah, so to be clear, we, this is not a, we didn't create these guidelines. We simply compiled these guidelines. So we've incorporated the governor's order, the phases, and the kind of breakdown of how those phases affect the businesses. And then we've also included all of the resources that have been made available by the state of Kansas. You know, obviously, a lot of our businesses are licensed through K E G, for instance. And we've included all of the guidance that they have available. They have some good industry-specific guidance that's been created, and most of theirs is compiled as well. The other resources that we include in there are largely from the CDC and from the recommendations that they've already put together for businesses. So again, this isn't, here's how Fannie County Economic Development or the Chamber or Downtown Vision said we should open. This is, here are the resources that are available to you as a business as you seek to reopen. And then we've incorporated local resources into that as well, where folks can get face masks, where they can get cleaning supplies. That's a big challenge that our businesses are really starting to see at this point is, I understand I have to clean more often. Where do I get the cleaning supplies to clean more often? So we're making sure that those resources are updated continuously. And we've asked, you know, not only the entities, obviously, the Chamber, Downtown, and C V G, when they hear of resources, we're asking for them to let us have those so we can incorporate them in the guide. But even from the business standpoint, we've had businesses who have said, hey, I just lucked on to call in this company, and they were able to help me out, or whatever. So we're incorporating those into the guide as local resources as well. But again, this is a compilation of information just to make it easier for our businesses. We don't want them having to go do searches on, you know, 14 different websites. If there's information that we can compile for them, that's what we want to do.
And I might point out, there's a list on the back, a couple of pages of those links. If you want to check them out yourself.
Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Ball? Commissioners?
No, I'd just like to, you know, compliment Lana. Obviously, on the webinar Friday, it was very clear, and I appreciate the guidance.
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in here? Because I think what Lana has said is right. I think the win is really tapped to the health department. And that's what the, you know, the guidance has been from the state as well. Secretary Norman called me personally and said, you guys have to make a decision at a local level. You have to look at what's happening locally. And so I do think what's really important here for us to go forward is for the health department to use evidence and our level statistics to set up the gating criteria, you know, as to moving between different phases of opening. We tell you the when, and then the business guy can tell you how. And I do think that the big card that the public really needs is for us to publish those metrics so that they can see where we are in the process of meeting that criteria. What is the positivity rate? If that's going to be our metric, we need to publish that so people can see where we are moving through that gating. And there's some nice models from other counties out there that we've looked through and tried to research. And I'd like to propose those. And we should work together in a working group and use this time, at least over the next seven days, to try and come to an agreement on those gating criteria. Because ultimately, we all have the same goal. We all want to give some security to our public. We want to give some reassurances and some plan. And that's what we'll give folks. As you said, people just want to know what the deal is. And I think we can provide that. And the more information and the more statistics we can put out there that are accurate, we absolutely should and will.
Commissioner Johnson?
Dr. Burns, I have a question for you. On the positivity rate and the hospital admission rate, which of those two would you give most credence to?
The positivity rate? That's part of the federal guidelines. And I think that that's probably going to be more useful to us. Why, yes, the flattening the curve has been focused, the flattening the curve campaign has been focused on trying to decrease the consumption of hospital resources. I think that we really have to focus on transmission. And the deal is, in our community, we have community transmission. Transmission is happening. People are getting this virus. It has spread through areas that have had less distancing. Now we're clamping down on more controls. But as long as we have circulating cases, we have circulating virus. Now, we can choose the level or the trajectory at what point we say that maybe that is declining. And that's why I think the case positivity rate is what we should go with. And that's what Dr. Burks and the federal guidelines suggest as an option. I think that that's something that we can easily measure. The difference in all of this is we cannot contain this within a certain population or a certain strata. Everyone's actions affect everyone else in a contagious situation. And so as long as, I really think that that case positivity and I think that that's going to be a metric that's going to be valid as we're able to increase the number and the span of the people that we're able to test as that criteria broadens.
Well, don't you skew the positivity rate by testing numbers?
Yes, and that's exactly what I'm saying. You know, if we are testing fifty people a day and have a fifty percent rate, and then we're able to test a hundred people per day and have a fifty percent rate, those absolute numbers are going up, but the rate is consistent. I think that's why it's going to be a more consistent metric to look at going forward, depending on whatever our denominator of number of tests is.
One of the concerns I have with, you know, trying to reopen businesses is that we're waiting fourteen days to make decisions. And that seems like an extremely long period of time, you know, before we, before we can know it, summer will be here, gone, we keep this rate up.
Yes, sir. But that's the reality of the virus and the incubation time. That fourteen day number isn't something I've made up. That's what's coming down from the guidelines and the understanding from the epidemiologic experts who are sending these guidelines.
But if people are getting ill from this virus but not going to the hospital, then the severity of it would appear to be not be that severe.
I don't know that I agree with that. When people die, it's severe. Not everybody dies.
Well, they're both saying we're in hospital, aren't they?
But I think it's a roll of the dice because you can't predict who's going to get very ill or who's going to die. It is an unpredictable virus. And so transmission in itself confers risk. And then there's a time period where you're kind of waiting for the shoe to drop to see how thick you're going to get.
That's why I was asking about the hospital rate. Is it, evidently, if you're not really sick, you're not going to go to the hospital, would be my assumption.
Well, yes.
Mr. Chairman, this Dave Jones. I agree with Dr. Burns. She had better terminology than I did, probably, in seeking information, and that's the positivity rate. But at this point, is there some appropriate way that we can, as a county mission, show our support for the document that is before us at this point? And perhaps claim that as an official opening stance, even though it's a living, moving document. So when a business calls and they ask for a little guidance, where do we go to open our business? We can say, here's a document that the commission endorses. That's my question.
I think that's a great document to base our answer on. That's why it was put together.
Perhaps our county administrator can lend a little perspective on how we would adopt that.
I think if you're adopting it as a resource document, you know, I think that's a proper approach to take, just as long as there's a confusion there that there's an indication that this is a document of when, as we discussed earlier, when to reopen. And under what criteria is put in place when you do reopen. If you're seeking this as a resource document, yes, I believe it is a good resource document for businesses to refer to on things they need to perhaps put in place as they move forward.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, again, Dave here. I appreciated Dr. Burns' statement that the health experts will determine when, leave that up to them somewhat. We determine how. And that's what I'm saying about this document, if we could adopt it as a resource officially, even though it's moving, living. And so if appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion for the commission to consider approving this as our resource document for reopening when businesses can reopen.
There's a motion. When they can reopen? Excuse me, for clarity, when they can reopen? Is that what you're?
Or how they can.
When they can, how they can.
I'm sorry, that was probably our mistake. When the time comes that the health folks say they can open, this is how they reopen.
Well, I'm just a slow listener.
Slow speaker. Does the motion go to second?
Oh, no, I'll second it.
Motion goes to second. Discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, this Lon, you know, I'm reluctant to vote for the motion, but as I was last Wednesday, I was misinterpreted on several things that I said. And through Facebook and emails and so forth, I was called tasked. So I probably will be called tasked again if I vote against this. It says on here, a guide, but I am concerned that it's going to be construed as a mandate or something that we're telling businesses that they have to do. And this is no reflection on the mona or the work that they've done. Because it says guide right there. I am totally against mandating. I'm totally against telling people what to do. I am all for offering guidelines, offering suggestions, offering options for wise ways to open businesses, wise ways to physically distance. I don't like social distances, as I've stated before. But I'm afraid if we put it in as a motion and we vote for it, that it's going to be construed as a mandate. And I am not in favor of mandates.
Commissioner Clifford here. I'm agreeing with Commissioner Fishy. I mean, we consider all kinds of data here to guide our decisions and sometimes common sense actually prevails. So I don't want to have my hands tied. I would like to be guided by the judgment of our healthcare experts. And I do think any of this guidance or data ought to be as public as possible because I think citizens will be watching this. I think they will be cheering it if they start to see the case positivity rate coming down. So again, disclosure for me is important. And I would agree with Commissioner Fishy. I don't want to be tied to a certain data set or document.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would just add, I don't have any problem at all suggesting to our taxpayers and our citizens that there's this document available to them.
Well, I think the other side of it, fellas, I think this demonstrates to our business owners and to our community that our suggestions, our guide, is spelling out safety, health, good health advice on how to protect both employees and consumers. Without recommending or approving or granting or blessing on this guide, anything goes. So I think this states as a commission that we are supporting our businesses to reopen in a healthy fashion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I have to agree that this is, you know, Lon stated right at the start that that's why it's not printed off because it's a fluid working, living document that will change lots over the days to come. And so, you know, I think people want to see some type of a road in the head or some type of rejection. This is how you go about getting your business back up and operating. I really enjoyed, or really appreciated the offer, somebody to compile the statistics and let the health people do the health work and let the statistician do the statistics. I think that makes a lot of sense. And we've got somebody in Canada that can do that readily.
Again, this is not, this is when we are allowed to reopen our non-incentive businesses. Further discussion?
I've stated, as Dave's speaking again, I've stated my position. I give you an example of some confusion between the news media, the community, and the folks on Facebook and so on. And that involves restaurants. When restaurants are going to be allowed to open, is it, are they going to be limited to twenty-five percent of formal capacity? Or are they going to be allowed to have ten people in the building for this first period and then go to thirty and then to ninety? Or are they going to be allowed to have ten people at a table and the other table with ten people has to be six feet away? And I think I've made my point about the confusion. This document, even though it's living and moving, clarifies what that restaurant could do. So again, that's why I offered the motion. We have, yeah, some of that.
So commissioners, one of my suggestions to this is before this is considered the true guide and approved, that you have also Dr. Burns and my signature and approval of the document. Because there potentially could be things that we would see or have recommendations of how to proceed for businesses as well.
Have you, have you had a chance to look at it?
I have not seen it yet.
Okay, that, for that, I apologize. It's been available for a week or so, so.
Further discussion? Hold those who favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion was cast period three to two.
And gentlemen, I completely understand your concerns, that you don't want it to appear to be a mandate. And I was clear in that, in the verbiage of the document, that this is not a mandate. It is simply intended to be a resource guide. But I can assure you that we will continue to stress that. We stressed that in the webinar last week. We'll continue to stress that, and specifically on your behalf, that the county commission is not saying, everybody do this exactly. You're saying, these are the resources. And as a commission, you want those resources available for your business.
And I might point out to Dr. Burns and to our county health, it is a living document, along with welcome your input as well.
Absolutely. And we do have a link in there to the local health department for specific guidance that businesses are concerned. For instance, if I reopen and I have an employee test positive, it's very clear in there, the first contact they make is with their health department and determine what steps to take. So we absolutely, they're including the information from the local health department and the role that they play in this for the businesses.
Mr. Chairman, this Lon again, two points. I know Bill's negative vote on our motion last week was misinterpreted because it was expressed to me as a misinterpretation of his vote. I don't want my vote on Bill's to be misinterpreted today that we're against helping businesses figure out how to reopen when it's time to reopen. Second point is, because we've made this motion, it appears to me that each time there's a change, that it's supposed to come back to us because we approved this document.
We approved the living document.
But we've approved what's in it today. So I, I would say if there's many changes, that it needs to come back to us.
I disagree. It's a living document that is presented as presented as changing. They...
And it will be, we will, you will be made aware of all revisions. And we also are noting on the document itself, when it's revised, we're putting that date down there so that businesses know that they're seeing the most current version of it, Commissioner Fishy. But I don't anticipate there will be huge changes made, you know, complete direction changes or anything of that nature. But how do we know? But we are, we absolutely will be aware every time there's a revision made to it. And we did incorporate the local order into that guide. So that is the first thing they see when they open that guide, is that new local.
That's why I saw it made one, three, one.
Yes.
The last thing, we, okay, we've got two more comments before I move to the next document.
And Dwayne, maybe you're headed this way, Commissioner Clifford. And I know this is the how, but the more important question we need to address is the when.
That's the next part.
Will that be as the board tells for, as the commission?
Advice? Board of Health?
To convene as a board of health, at least for the discussion aspect of it, correct?
We are a board of health. Let's get into this from the commission and to board of health.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to recess the county commission meeting. And we convene after a seven or eight minute break as the county board of health. And I'm second to that motion.
Hold it there.
Aye.
You have a motion and a second on the table. We haven't voted on it.
Which one?
The guide.
Okay, we voted on that.
Three to.
Okay. I kind of do as a yank.
Yeah, okay. Quick break.
Quick break. Quick break.
JBS, that's Greeley, Colorado, and Sioux City would be the big city where we heard so much about the Smith Foods and the large Tyson plant there. In Weld County, and they're not totally comparable, certainly not to each other or to us, Weld County has 350,000 people and almost 2,000 cases of positive, but 100 deaths. Most of the people dying there are elderly, and I don't have that exact number, but it's very skewed towards elderly people. Woodbury County, Sioux City, they had 1,100, so half as many cases, but certainly a smaller county with about 100,000 people. Currently, three deaths in workers at the plants, almost 700 workers were infected or have been to date. So, there are more deaths than that, that's just among the working people, but it's still in single figures, which is interesting. And just in looking at those numbers compared to Weld County, I think we're more comparable to Woodbury County, Iowa, given that the proliferation of positive tests was in workforce, which I suspect may be true, or their relatives. So, just from a perspective, and Weld County's now opening up, I'll tell you, based on their state guidance, so I think there's a little reason to be optimistic that we will get there despite what we're having to deal with today. So, I hope that adds just a little perspective. I would like to see us try to, maybe with Shannon's help, a statistician, nail down this data set, Greeley's using bar graphs of actual positive cases, and you can see the trend now. I realize that depends on testing numbers. In Iowa, it's more like what you're proposing, which is a mate, and I think here we probably would agree that the rate is a more allowable number.
Absolutely.
Do you always have a comment or report?
Well, most often, yeah. Sometimes questions, though, Mr. Chairman, this is Lon, and I will just quickly interject. I think we have to keep our sense of humor during any time of crisis or trouble times. The other thing to help us keep things in perspective is, I was looking over the weekend, the confirmed number of cases, and these are going to be rough numbers because they change, to the population within the United States, within the state of Kansas, and within Finney County. And our rate jumped up, obviously, from about 0.7 to 1.5 with the most recent, but we're still less than 2% of confirmed cases to our population. In the state of Kansas, we're less than 0.3%, in the country, we're less than one-half of 1%. So, we're trying to address something, and again, I'm running the risk, I am a risk taker, I am running the risk of being misinterpreted. I'm running the risk of being misinterpreted as being insensitive and so forth, and I am not. I am sensitive to the fact there is a virus. But my point is, what's the next virus? What's the next thing out there? Because we're always going to have, we're always going to have struggles and troubles within this life. But we're addressing less than 2% of the population, if you even use our number, and say we're up to 5%, we're addressing less than 5% for, and putting the other 95% at this advantage in many ways, being able to be with their families. The one thing I was going to mention later, but I'm going to throw it in here, in the last seven weeks, starting with a close cousin who died just before everything was shut down, I've, we've experienced 12 deaths of friends, clients, family, neighbors, within a seven-week period. Within the same seven-week period, we've experienced three deaths, who I don't know any of those, through the virus. I think we need to keep things in perspective, we need to think, keep things in context, and yes, should we be prudent? Should we be safe? Should we be, we taught our kids and grandkids to wash their hands every time after they're, you know, do stuff for years. So, we're not saying anything different, you know, that, than what we should be, teaching our kids about health and so forth, you know, each and every day. So, I think when we look at it, and 95% of the people are not confirmed, less than 5% are less than 5% are confirmed, I think we just need to keep those numbers in mind, to keep it all in perspective.
That goes back to my opening statement, when we, we all had the same storm, but different boats. This is a complicated issue, and our challenge as commissioners is to look at all sides of this issue and make the best judgment we can. Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us meet again before 14 days, discuss this and see where trends are.
Our current order is for seven days.
For seven days. So, that would entail us meeting next Monday on the 11th, which would be fine.
Well, Colleen might speak that, but we, their order expires on 10.
Yes.
We might want to continue the meeting on Friday.
Be fine.
Agreeable. Robert and I have had a discussion slightly just kind of in the hall of passing duty. Is it a task force that we should be looking at, get more opinions from the rest of our community leaders, just not the commission? Robert, would you like to expand on that idea just a little bit?
Sure, I'll, I filled this suggestion out to a few of the commissioners about developing a recovery task force for Finney County, which takes into the fact a couple of aspects. Very important was that we did debate back at work today, which is the health and safety aspect of our community, as well as the economic aspect. So, it's an overall recovery approach for Finney County. I would anticipate that a task force made up of not just representatives from local areas of government, but also from the health field and business field and general public field to try and rattle with this topic to help make some suggestions, recommendations, guidelines for the governing body to consider, implement as, as we work our way through and continue on through recovery here in Finney County on that. So, I often end up as a suggestion again for consideration of this discussion today with, with the Board of County Commissioners, or actually the Board of Health.
Currently with the, okay. Let's discuss that suggestion for a brief, you know, you start, you're on my side, we'll work on it.
I'd be fine with me, I just hate to see we get built more levels of bureaucracy and get burdened with lots of things and don't gain that.
About an advisory board.
It's true. I, however you say, it's just, it's something that has to be pretty nimble and be able to act quickly.
Good point.
Thank you, Larry. I don't want to be bound by a decision of a task force, but I certainly would appreciate the input of our citizens and public entities.
My position would be, I tend to agree with, it'd be something productive, but I'd like to see it be a day when Dr. Burden's is in town and could personally participate in person. Phone system is, is not without its downside, so I prefer the in-person view or a smelly place.
Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones, I am in town. I'm choosing to isolate myself with my family, and I would hope that we could somehow set up a Zoom platform, so, to preserve the safety of others. But I have a responsibility to go back and work in the hospital as well, and so I'm trying to decrease my contagion as much as possible so that I can keep myself healthy and to go to work.
I appreciate your position, so I, I won't, we'll disagree, but I still want to see it in person.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon, and I, I appreciate what Robert's suggesting, please understand. But I think in the way that this is moving, and I agree, we need to meet on Friday, I agree with that, and because we are dedicated to the citizens and serving the taxpayers who are the elected ones, I think task force should always bring options to the board, but I look at my task force as the ones that have been sending me emails and texting, and I've hit both sides of this issue. I think I'm hearing from a task force, I'm hearing from business owners, I'm hearing from others right now. So, I think because it is moving so fast, that we need to hold that here. And then, one thing you asked a little bit ago, Mr. Chairman, is whether we should be more restrictive. I'm one of those that says not.
Well, I'll sum up the consensus then. I am gathering no task force, but I would highly encourage our community leaders to tune into us Friday and offer their comments, and we do have comments that have come forward, a lot of them has been questions that I've asked staff to deal with internally, questions to call in. Quick comment?
Quick comment. If you do, if you can research it and look at it, Wyandotte County and Johnson County have both been highly successful with convening with the task force and/or committee of reopening and have produced documents. Wyandotte County for sure does have a binding document, which is something that I would definitely recommend that we at least consider putting together to then have commission review and potentially approve. So, I would suggest being able to review that if you haven't seen it yet.
Mr. Chairman, I would just simply ask that staff forward those to us and then make a review before Friday.
Okay. What I was addressing today, they've taken quite a few questions, questions that do not relate to the commissioners, that emergency management can deal with, that health department can deal with, I've asked those staff to be, those questions to be redirected to them. Are there anything, Robert, that comments that should, that you've been way aware of that should come up from the commission?
Actually, I volunteer, don't worry for that.
Don't worry. I'm sorry. You're being, the questions, anything directly related to the commission that staff cannot deal with.
Give me the microphone.
There's just suggestions, so.
Can you speak to them?
So, what is it to consider another person to do the stats? So, please consider another person associated with, by the EDC and City Commission to do the stats, plenty of smart people in the community. Not reopening, will instill fear in the community, people are choosing not to go to the hospital out of fear of affecting their health. We have people in our community with mental health issues due to lack of income, these are problems that should be addressed. Inability to work is adding stress to the mental wellbeing, mental wellbeing of some individuals. And if nothing else, reopening should be based on more unbiased sample data. Right now, only, the only people that are testing are those who show symptoms or have been in contact with someone who is positive. That tilts the data toward a very high likelihood of coming out positive. And the last one, opening up, the economy won't do any good if people are staying home because they're concerned about the rise in infection numbers.
It's a good point. As far as these, who were, were, and my observation is percentage of the population is probably that were very dramatically, there's also a large percentage that shows up and continues as normal, they're probably ignoring it. Let's take a quick, this is not an official, we're back to the task force, kind of, ready arms, if you like the idea, or if you don't, because this is not an official, it's just a consensus, I'm going to look this direction. What do you want?
Sure. Task force?
I'm not opposed to the task, task force, but we don't have enough time right now, it's Friday to put one together.
I think this is a deal of our Friday, then. I guess, I think the general consensus is no task force, but we would appreciate community leaders to stay in touch with us commissioners, as well as our administrator, and for sure, sign in on our meeting Friday for observations or comments, and if you are, I'm sure staff will identify if you have a suggestion or comment that has came from one of the other taxing identities, that you will be recognized and heard.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, because I agree with what you just said, but on Friday, are we meeting as a board of health, probably, on, probably no other agenda item, I would imagine?
Yeah, this is strictly no county commissioner, but it'll be a board of health, I would say.
You can go ahead and, you'll have to meet as the Board of County Commissioners.
Just open up.
Right, but I mean, I'm just saying for the public's knowledge, most, if not all of that meeting will be as a board of health.
No plat discussions or anything like that. Further discussion as board of health?
I would offer motion this day, Mr. Chairman, that we recess, that we close our board of health meeting and reopen as a board of county commissioners.
This is Lon, I would second that motion.
All is in favor of the motion, but particularly if I say aye. Motion is carried, we are in opportunity to motion.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a prior chief media in the room that may want to say something. He handed us this, I didn't know if he got anything else to share with us.
When I looked his direction, he was moving like this really fast, but he's coming forward, so, sir.
It is what it is. Corey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Therese, I just wanted to let you know that we finally finished our annual report from 2019, you know, we're four months into the month, period and a year, but it's a process that I felt we needed to revive for recruiting purposes, and we expanded this section in there on our interaction with the rest of the county. So, I wanted to make sure that you guys all had a copy of that report, and you can see what, what we're doing all the time. I'm here to answer any questions if you haven't.
I haven't had a chance to read it yet, so.
You're planning behind me, sir.
I did look at it online in the City Commission's agenda for tomorrow, so, yeah, well done, well done.
A lot of people were done with this.
Bill, have you, you're prospective, have your people been helping out, or elected sheriff, the police as well, or are you pretty much keeping yourself busy doing what you do?
Pretty much keeping busy doing what we do. We suspended tours, which most of our stuff was tied to the school thing, so, with school closing, it's hard for, there's no one to come out tours. Made it very easy for us to essentially isolate ourselves, still going on our calls, we're still testing hybrids and doing things like that, the things that we have to do.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you all.
And I guess I have one last comment, I don't think this was asked, I know staff is pushed to the limit, providing bodies, granting bones in line and everything like that, we've had a lot of help from various organizations, are you keeping up, guys? Are you, you're still reaching out for more bodies to help?
We just received about 10 more support staff from Army, and so, in the next couple of days, we will work, be working to assign them to certain positions, so for the most part, keeping up. Our hotline phone number has been, we've been receiving a high volume of phone calls every day, so, we have training, we have staff that we will be training this week.
For those who could not hear, Colleen, there has been 10 additional folks come in from the Army side, the federal side, which is greatly appreciated, that those are being trained and dedicated to where they need, or need the most. All right, fellas, are we done for the day? Anybody have?
I only have reports.
Reports, okay, that is true, this is a monthly meeting. How many news reports?
Just real briefly, other than my efforts with the COVID-19 process, our staff continues to go through the process of the annual county budget, and we'll continue with visits from outside agency this week, I believe we can, we conclude those this week, looking at that C E S, and then continue working, begin working with the departments internally and developing their budget as well, so, along with various, various other items.
So, you, you take that burden off of us, and you're, you're not, thank you.
That's what I've done for about 23 years or more, so, it's hard to give it up.
Thank you for your report.
Received numerous contacts with taxpayers over the virus problem, responded to lots of them. I would, the only thing, this is kind of off the subject, is I would hope that everybody doesn't get distracted from their responsibility to fill out the census, because if we don't get the census filled out and get counted, we're going to be undercounted again, and we don't want that. So, I would encourage everybody to fill out their census form.
Good point, thank you very much.
Dr. Clifford here, again, I would ask all of our citizens to continue to be socially distant as much as possible, wear masks in public, and exercise a very good hygiene. I did make a tour of local retail spots yesterday. I was curious to see whether the Walmart closure in Fort County would drive, Fort County citizens over here, and I report to you that there weren't an ordinary number, but as always, there were many out of county and actually out of state tags in parking lots and open establishments. I would say that about half the people are wearing masks, groups are congregating, and I would emphasize that continue to need to practice social isolation. My activities since our meeting Wednesday, I just did a test site over the weekend, I was glad to see activity going on there, with contact tracing, called several surrounding county commissioners in Fort Kearney, Scott, Seward, and Thomas County, and some of those counties are anticipating a reopening, as you might imagine, but our tri-cities or tri-counties certainly are not with increasing numbers in Fort, Finney, and Seward. In your, with your permission, I did interview with K W C H over the weekend, KSN, Columbia Commissioner Fishy, and High Plains Public Radio, so, expect to be similarly busy this week. Thank you.
For my part, no official county meetings or anything, I have not attended them. I, as all the rest of you, have quite numerous contacts, the telephone, in-person, emails from our constituents, and I thank all of you in the public who have done so. I have not responded to very many of them, there's quite an overwhelming number, so I have just elected not to respond, does not mean I did not read those and appreciate your inputs.
Mr. Jones? Dave Jones, your eye, I kind of echo, and for fellow commissioners, no official meetings, a couple observed meetings and a webinar that involves the opening guide that's been discussed at this meeting today. I mentioned earlier that prior to a meeting a week ago, I'd only heard from, from people who are anxious to get their business open, and then after our meeting, then began to hear from people who are not anxious to open businesses, but rather wanted to deal more directly with the health issues, and I must say, I appreciate those. I would ask that our population continue to let us know, either by phone or email or however, if they can convey their thoughts, ideas, recommendations, to send those to us, I highly appreciate them. And then on, as Commissioner Fishy said, we need to keep our humorous, I'm not sure one humorous contact I had, I had a phone call from a fellow in Reno County, formerly was a county administrator here, I won't mention that his name, but he wanted to know if anything was happening in Finney County, so, they're, they're having a little quieter time of life in Dico County than they are. Anyway, that's, that's my report.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon, and what's our time limit on these reports?
You're on clock, so, you've done, you've done seven seconds.
Oh, that's just my premise. No, I, I want to say a couple things, and then I wanted to use my time today for some clarification, but I would echo what Mike Jones mentioned on the census, as a matter of fact, I'm thinking about sending out a notice to the 39th District to remind them, because some of these rural counties are not responding very well in percentage-wise, and states keeping track of that, I think overall in the state is only 56, or less than 60%, there it was last time I looked. Bill's already mentioned, I was asked to take the chairman's spot to interview with KSN, because I found out that our new reporter with KSN, who's in training right now, is at Ingles, you know, and I know her family very well, so.
And for my perspective, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just didn't go high above my tractor, I had to deal with it.
And you did that so well, you did that very well.
We look a lot better on TV.
That's true. But I would ask for your indulgence. I, I was misunderstood, obviously, by several people last week, and I want to clarify a couple of points. First of all, I believe in the sanctity of life, and I was photoshopped and accused of condoning death, and from conception to death, natural death, I am a believer in sanctity of life. I was accused of being showing favors when I used the word taxpayer in my conversation, but I did that knowing who was communicating things, and I knew they were taxpayer. However, the person who took issue with that evidently, well, obviously was watching, but evidently had a question, and we were just reading the questions, and I guess they don't know, we don't see the names, we don't know who's firing that question to us, so I had no idea if they were from In County, Out of County, there was one reference to, or maybe a couple references to salon, so we didn't know type of business. So, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not trying to distinguish between, and make one taxpayer more important than another taxpayer. We are serving the taxpayers of Finney County. And then, the last couple of things, as I've stated before, I am a believer in having choice, having options, having freedoms, and I'm going to continue to hold up that option, or that belief, because, as our pastor said yesterday, we are always in this life going to have suffering, we're going to have a temporary, momentary suffering of some sort within this life, and we've got to lift up hope and get out of the anxiety and fear of whatever that suffering might be. And as Bill did yesterday on Saturday, and Bill's familiar with this term in policy governance, monitoring performance, I did a direct board inspection on Saturday, and I will tell you from my inspection, that businesses that I looked at, there's more distancing, more consideration for health in the small businesses that aren't permitted to be open right now than there are in the large businesses. And so, that's why I'm going to be a strong proponent for trying to get these small businesses open. Small businesses are the backbone of the US, of Kansas, and Finney County, and we need to try to get them opened as quickly as possible, and in my experience on Saturday, I felt so much more safe in a couple of small businesses than I did in a couple of larger businesses. So, that's my direct board inspection. At all. Lastly, somebody accused me of saying something about data last meeting, which I was echoing what Bill was talking about data, and then they said, well, but you've mentioned mental health and so forth without data. Well, one of my beliefs through policy government, governments is a crude measure of the right thing beats a precise measure of the wrong thing, so I was crudely measuring on that Saturday. Thank you, and I, and next time, you can limit me to half of what my time usually is, so.
Well, your, what your time limit is was remain a mystery.
It is, it is a mystery.
Chairman, anything further?
Probably, did you want to hear from your county counselor, she's still on the line?
That's a good point, I did not know you were there. Any comments from our counselor today on what we have done legally or not? Are you there? Can you visit with us?
Are you still there, Kristen?
I think she gave up on us.
Is, is our meeting Friday at 8:30?
This is, 8:30, gentlemen?
That's on me, that's fine.
Okay, Friday, 8:30, where's your?
Thank you.